Well, welcome everyone who's here tonight. It's a little bit after 5:30, so we should get started. Here promptly, so we can, we can take the full hour here with our, our council member elect. But I want to welcome everyone to San Jose Arts Advocates. It would be a Mitre City Council Forum, hopefully this is a first in a series. We've had a, we had the pleasure of hosting a couple candidate forums. With the candidates for the runoff elections that were just, well, almost decided, I guess they're still counting votes. But were, were voted upon most recently. But today, we're going to be getting to know a council member who's going to be coming into office in January, who was elected. In the March primary, he was lucky enough to receive 50% plus one, as we say, of the vote, or actually quite a bit more than. 50% of the vote in the primary, which meant that he was elected outright, so. He has had the opportunity to spend some time really adjusting to. The potentials of the new office and working on his transition. But tonight, he's graciously offered to spend an hour with us and the creative community to talk about arts and culture in San Jose. And you know, his thoughts on that and some, some thoughts that we have, and I'm going to go ahead and rename myself because I'm realizing. That I'm named after. My business. All right, there we go. Yeah, that's me. So, um, so welcome, Matt Mahan, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give a little, a brief bio about Matt. That he was gracious enough to share with us or share with me earlier, but I'm not going to be, not gonna embellish too much, I hope. But so Matt grew up over the hill, as it were, in Watsonville. And came to San Jose during high school on a work-study scholarship for low-income students. He's graduated from Harvard and studied politics, philosophy and economics, or PPE. And came back to San Jose to be a public school teacher, thank you very much, in East San Jose at Joseph George Middle School. Later, Matt transitioned into software where he built two venture-backed companies. That promoted civic engagement by building tools for voters to organize around issues and candidates they support. And that was causes, if folks remember on Facebook. And then that later that morphed into Brigade, which is his most recent venture. And he'll be starting as the D10, District 10, city council member on January 1st. District 10, for those of you who are not as familiar, is in South San Jose, it's primarily Almeden and Blossom Valley areas. It also includes Vista Park around Gunderson High School. So, and he's married to his lovely wife Sylvia, they have two children, Nina and Luke, Nina is three and Luke is one, and they live in Blossom Valley. So Matt, welcome. Thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Thanks for having me. I really appreciate it. I'm excited to chat with you all.
Nice. Well, I'm gonna start, we'll start off with some sort of prepared questions and I'd end topics, but we're gonna keep the conversation. Flowing as much as we can, make it, we got a little more, a little less formal than a forum or a candidate debate. Because as we already covered, you do not have an opponent at this point, so we can, we can sort of have.
So glad that's over.
We can have more of an open conversation. So we'll start off with something. Somewhat, somewhat light. Do you have any creative passions yourself, any, anything that you, you enjoy as far as creative? Getting your creative juices flowing, and if so, what are those things?
Yeah, I, you know, my personal passion, I, I hope this counts. It's not, not a fine art or anything, but my personal passion is actually gardening and then, and then learning how to cook whatever I grow. So I do a lot of vegetable gardening, gardening, some flowers. In fact, my daughter and I just took out the, the park strip between the sidewalk and the street in front of our house and landscaped it with some native plants. And so that's kind of my, my personal creative outlet, but. I also paint a little bit and I've, I'm always just very impressed with folks who are, who are really creative. I know we, we all are in our own way, but you know, I have family members who are really into music and, and, and painting and those sorts of things. And I, I love it. I think it's, it's awesome. So I'm excited to talk to you guys about art in our, in our city.
Nice. Well, that's, that's actually a pretty good segue. And this is a question, it's more, it's kind of a more general question, but looking back at your, in your campaign. You position yourself as a strong advocate for San Jose's neighborhoods. Something on your website, I want to say, in your platform was a great city starts with great neighborhoods. And for San Jose, the path to protecting and improving quality of life begins with standing up for our neighborhoods. Do you have any thoughts on how San Jose can build stronger experiences of place and identity in our neighborhoods? Particularly using arts and culture or leveraging creative community?
Well, it's a great question, and, and you're right, I did really try to focus on the neighborhoods, you know, I, during the campaign, my, my strategy was very simple. I basically just went out and knocked on doors for nine months, every single day, knocked on about 10,000 doors. And when I talked to people, they, it was, it was really an interesting experience. They were not interested, at least with me, in discussing the big national political debate of the day. They were very interested, and maybe this is because we have educated voters who understand what the city does. They were interested in their parks, libraries, community centers. The potholes in the street in front of their home, the, the basic quality of life issues that impact people every day. Public safety also being a big one. And I think we have a really, a great model down in District 10 that I'd like to bring to more of our neighborhoods. And it's, it's by no means the, the only example of this, it's just one that I'm familiar with, which is the Martin Fontana Parks Association. And so this is one of our local parks where the neighborhood has just embraced the park. As the place where they are going to invest in a public space where they meet one another, where they exercise, they enjoy nature. They've even incorporated. Art in the sense of taking, so you wouldn't actually think of this as a park that the community would rally around necessarily. It actually has the PG&E lines going through it, and so you could look at it and say, oh, these big, you know, PG&E towers and these big scary lines. But actually, the community got organized when PG&E wanted to cut down the oak trees that were under the lines. And since then, this neighborhood association has done an incredible job of bringing in more native plants, caring for the trees, building a dog park. And taking some of the transformers that are on the ground, I think they're transformers, don't quote me on that, but. The PG&E boxes that are there and painting them and doing really just beautiful. Paintings on, on top of and around these boxes, that when you walk by them, they've gone from being this sort of impersonal metal box that's painted green. Or concrete boxes or, and then instead, it's, it's like a beautiful painting of a, of a pond or a forest or, and so I just, you know, I think. It's just one little example, but the way in which the community there organized. And decided to embrace this public space and turn it into something that everyone could really benefit from. It's such a joy to walk through that park. And so it's one little microcosm, but I think if we can empower every neighborhood. To find its little public corners, whether it's the sidewalk or a parklet or a bigger city park or whatever it is. And, and take real ownership of it, and the city ought to be, in my view, and I'll, I'll pause on this point. I really think the city ought to be a platform for citizens to get involved. We can't just send our tax dollars to City Hall and assume everything's going to be done by the city and its staff. We're just, we don't have enough resources for that, but where the city can create the structures and the support and maybe a little bit of funding. To help the neighborhoods take a little more ownership of the space around them. And then create whatever they, whatever their vision is, that's something I, I think is really promising and, and I'd like to see more of.
Nice. Well, building off of that, I know we wanted to, we wanted to get into talking about the role of the city council, right? And you, I think this is a great segue, the role of the council in terms of promoting and supporting arts and culture and cultural life in San Jose. But before speaking to that, just in building off that last point. What, we were also really interested in promoting local artists and making sure that our local arts community has opportunity and access to opportunities for, you know. Requests for proposal and other, other public art projects within the city. When it comes to, you know, neighborhood projects like that, what would your thoughts be on, you know, how we can best connect? Those neighborhood groups with, you know, with the artists and the creative community?
Good question. I'm not sure that I. Have a, an answer yet. I mean, potentially working through a third-party organization, I'm just within the theme of empowering the community. I'm big on finding community-based organizations to, to play that kind of role. So I'm not sure it needs to be centralized within City Hall, perhaps. An organization like, like you all could help facilitate that kind of, that kind of exchange.
I think, well, I think we'd be happy to. Yeah, part of our, at least, we sort of have a three-pronged approach to what we're dealing so far with SJA. And that's advocacy, obviously, so fighting for, for more funding, more recognition, more support, but just, and also. Just more awareness, really. And then education, so, and that's not just educating. The community, the broader community, but also educating our own community or creative community about civic life, right? And about ways to, ways to engage like you're talking about. And then educating folks like you, folks who are now decision-makers and are able to, to really bring that, that power to the bear on these issues. So, thank you for that. So what, what would you say then, building up that is the role of, say, a city council member or the city council in. You know, supporting and/or promoting arts and cultural life in San Jose and more of a creative culture here?
Yeah, I, I think it's important because arts and culture are fundamental component of quality of life. And I think ultimately, city government ought to be thinking about quality of life broadly. And that's not to say that there isn't some hierarchy values, I'm big on focus and prioritization. I don't think the city can do everything, but unlike a school board where the mandate is pretty narrow, super important, but, but very focused. I think that city council becomes, or, or take a transit district, same thing, very focused. Goal of helping people, helping the public cost-effectively move from point A to point B. The city really is the lowest level of government that has a more general mandate, is I guess what I would say. And so when I went around knocking on doors, it was very clear to me what the top priorities were. And I plan to be responsive to the community's needs, you know, I typically, and this was certainly true. In my door knocking, public safety was again and again, the top thing that came up. That is the most fundamental promise of local government, that it will keep you safe. And so everything from emergency preparedness to property crime to, you know, 911 response times, people brought that up a lot. Housing and homelessness was right up there as a top priority. People feel, I certainly feel that it's a moral failing that we live in a society where people are living on the streets. And certainly beyond just homelessness, we have a lot of folks in our community who are housing insecure, as, as we all know. I've had a lot of friends leave the Bay Area because of the cost of living. And then the third thing that came up was what I'd call infrastructure. A lot of people brought up the roads down in District 10, we don't have as much public transit infrastructure. So a lot of people are getting in their cars to get to work or go to the store, whatever it might be. But I'd like to broaden out that infrastructure concept to include a lot of public amenities that did come up. And if you kind of total them all up, they were a top concern, and that includes our parks, our libraries, our community centers, our trails. And, you know, while people didn't say public art in those words, a lot of people talked about wanting to take pride in where they live. A lot of people brought up beautification, people brought up trash and weeds, because that's what they see along a lot of our roadways and feeling like. We haven't had the budget or the, the focus and, and the ability to execute on keeping our city clean. And so, you know, and I don't, I'm, I'm new, newly elected, so I don't have the, the full history behind everything that, that has gone on in the city. But there was definitely, as an undercurrent in many of the conversations I had, a desire to have a real pride of, of place, pride of ownership in the city. From our residents. And I think art plays an important role in that. I think, yeah, we should pick up the trash and clear the weeds, but I think people's feeling of belonging and commitment and. The kind of inspiration within the city is going to require more than just picking up the trash. I think it's also, you know, allowing the community to, and it's supporting and encouraging the community expressing itself. So I, I think art actually does play a role in that sort of fundamental quality of life mandate that the city has.
What would you say? You mentioned. Some of the priorities that you heard, you heard from residents, obviously, and the priorities that, you know, as someone who has run for office myself and run a lot of campaigns in San Jose knows, come up a lot. Public safety is obviously usually top of the pops when it, when it comes to issues that you hear. And I do appreciate and agree that I think a lot of the times folks may not have the words for it, they may not say the word public art, they may not even say the word art. But they, or even culture, but they certainly know it and they feel it around them. And that leads to. The unfortunate circumstance of, of sometimes arts and culture being something we can't necessarily quantify the impact of. You can do it in economic terms, certainly, especially even in San, in San Jose, where we have really robust creative economy. We have a lot of nonprofits, but also arts businesses that are functioning and employing a lot of our residents, employing a lot of artists. And what I'm getting to is. You, you focus a lot on, you know, ways to grow our local economy, right? Bringing more middle-class jobs to San Jose, how do you, how would you see? How do you see the arts and culture and, or creative culture fitting in, or creative economy fitting into that? And how do you see the creative economy in the hotel and, and entertainment? And hospitality economy fitting into the, the growth and recovery we're going to have to see from, from COVID?
Yeah, well, there's, there's a lot in your questions, so you might have to, if I miss any of it, please follow up on it. But I, you know, on the one hand, I, I am a numbers guy, I like to understand the math behind things, you know, are things feasible? Will they work? What will it take? I like to plan and, and try to understand. How we're going to actually get to where we want to go, but I'll also be the first to admit. That the, the most valuable things in life are often hard and even impossible to measure. So I'm glad, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I think it's, it's really true. And I think I ran on things that were often quite concrete, we have a housing crisis, we know it's largely a supply problem. We have more people who either live here or want to live here, or there are jobs for than there are housing. So we need to build more housing, without getting into how we're going to do that, but that's probably longer and different conversation. San Jose is in the unfortunate position of having an imbalance, we need more jobs. We don't have the kind of tax base we ought to have, because we actually house a disproportionate number of workers in Silicon Valley. And so I ran on those issues because I think they're foundational and they're concrete. And yet, I, I think what shouldn't be missed is, as we try to bring jobs particularly to our urban villages and our downtown core and near transit. And places where jobs really ought to be concentrated. And as we work to build more housing, we also have to continue to think about quality of life. These are not purely, we're talking about people's lives and the quality of their life and their ability to, to achieve their full potential, and the good lives. And so they aren't just reducible to a number, it's not enough to just say we've got to build 10,000 homes or twice, it's actually more than that. 30, 40,000 homes, or that the city needs, you know, 300,000 more jobs to, to, you know, whatever it is. You have to also think about the quality of it, and. So I've, I've sort of, I'm not sure, as I was concerned, I may have gone off on a tangent there a little bit, but I, I think the quality piece is key. And arts and culture and access to nature and. Space that's safe and beautiful, I mean, these are important things. In fact, I, just as one other aside, and then I want to make sure, get back to answering your question. I supported the most recent measure T to expand funding or to, to basically extend funding for open space preservation. Because to me, that's one of the most important investments we can make in the future, and not just because of our climate crisis. But we're going to keep growing, and as the Bay Area adds millions of more people, we need to plan ahead and preserve. That space where people can go for health and beauty and inspiration, and nature's one form of that. But we also shouldn't write off our urban areas and just think of them as these functional spaces that are just supposed to house people and create jobs. And it'd also be beautiful, walkable, enjoyable.
Right. Well, and, and then sort of building off that, I guess, getting away from then, the more, the more aesthetic and, and. Quality of life aspects of it, when it comes back to the economy. So we're, we're obviously going through a, a very challenging time economically, small businesses, especially restaurants, hotels. Your hospitality industry and the arts industry are suffering right now throughout the country, especially in, in our area. We've had, you know, theater companies that can't have traditional shows, you've got hotels that are, you know, barely, you know, accepting any guests, because people aren't traveling at this point. So, and that compounds to create even bigger problems, because a lot of the taxes that we get from all of that. That hotel usage go into funding the arts. So as you look ahead towards economic recovery, I know that the mayor has really, you know, been, been trying to. You know, work with the council to develop a more cohesive plan for how we, how we cover and bring our businesses back. Do you feel as though, right, it seems as though right now that it's kind of staggered and it's not so much based on. It, it's how, how businesses are being brought back are based on varying things, depending on who you're talking to and which level of government you're talking to. How do you see the hospitality industry and the, and the creative industry playing a role in that recovery? Because they do employ a ton of people in our, in our city, and it's, it really is the lifeblood of, of, you know, of generating revenue when we can't generate. Revenue other ways, right, generating that, that tourist revenue, so. A little bit, any, any thoughts you have on how the, how we can prioritize or, or support that industry as we recover?
Yeah, I think we need to be really aggressive about trying to protect our hospitality. Arts, culture, the, the kind of, all of those jobs that. Are not so easy to do, or, or maybe impossible to do remotely. And you're right, are kind of the lifeblood of downtown especially, but also just an economic driver, and they are, you're right. I, I think the, the, what we do as a city has to be rooted in science, and it's a tough moment. Obviously, we got some good news today nationally, internationally, I guess, that there, you know, maybe a vaccine on the way, which is great. We're also in the midst of this, this latest surge, if you will, which is really scary. And so it's a hard thing to balance, I don't pretend to have great answers here. I, and I think with the weather turning colder, it's even harder. During the summer, I advocated pretty loudly for the city to make more investments in our commercial zones. And to bring everything outside and to support that with more infrastructure. And what I meant by that is I was going to cities like, I was just kind of curious, so I was driving around, checking out different commercial corridors. Then went to Mountain View and Los Gatos amongst others. And noticed that those cities seem to be rebounding the fastest in their commercial corridors. Because the city was proactively investing and creating barricades and coordinating off space and inviting. Encouraging the businesses out into the street, and San Jose has been doing this as well, I think it's hard for a bigger city, we don't have a single main street. So I'm, it's not meant as a critique necessarily, but I think we need to do more to figure out how our businesses can survive. And entire industries can survive in this new normal, but it does have to be rooted in science. And so what that's going to take is a partnership with the county and our, and our public health office. Because they're the ones who need to make the call on what's safe and how to do, how to reopen safely. And I wish there was a simple answer to this. Obviously, masks, critical ventilation is critical, trying to do things as much in open air outdoors is, is important. I'm not going to pretend to be, you know, an epidemiologist or public health official, so I, I don't want to. Overstate, you know, my role here, but I do think to the extent that the city can make strategic investments. The reason I liked commercial zones, and I think that idea still has merit, is that you may be able to get a critical mass. We may not be able to, we don't have the resources to give grants to every small business in the city to keep them afloat. But if we can identify, say, one commercial zone in each council district, so 10 commercial zones. And make a proactive investment in creating public space where people can safely come back to engage in. Eating, drinking, enjoying entertainment, you know, live music, whatever it might be. I think that would be really neat, and, and, and that should be doable. I mean, we ought to, as a city, have the resources to pick a small number of commercial zones and really double down on them. And make them a place where people feel safe and want to come back and engage. So I think there are strategies, I don't think there's a silver bullet.
Yeah, I would agree with you there, but thank you, I appreciate that, thank you for the answer. And I wanted to just give a shout out, so Yori Seeger and Dana Harris, they're the founders of the School of Visual Philosophy. They're on our core team and they're our, our hosts tonight. Yori, did you want to give a quick plug for, hey, there, there, I don't know if you guys wanted to give a quick plug for Safely Social San Jose? And your, your concept for bringing back some of this social life within the constraints of what we're going through right now?
Yeah, absolutely. So we were asked to join a, a task force with District 6 and.
No, District 3.
Sorry, District 3, we're in District 6. And one of the things that the task force and, and we came up with is a concept of safely, safely social San Jose. And it's exactly what you're talking about, is how do we, as a culture, restart our grassroots movements? And recreate a new social dance based on what we have to do to stay safe and, and, and keep open once we have our businesses. Bringing customers back in, and the best way that I describe it is when you take your mask off, you got to think of yourself now as a smoker, so. It used to be that you could smoke anywhere you wanted to, and now you can't have your, your mask off anywhere you want to. And just to have the respect for other people, because we don't know what, what everybody's situations are. We don't know if your neighbor is, has a precondition or lives with somebody who is. And how do we socially really pay attention to what we take for granted in terms of what we do on a normal day? And how do we really interact with people, so that way we do this safely? And we make all of our citizens feel like they want to go out and be with people and not be afraid that they're going to contact people that don't have that respect for everybody. So I can blab about this forever, but in the elevator pitch version, what we're trying to do is, and we're getting funding for, we're, our part. The School of Visual Philosophy is teaching team-building workshops. And that could be for businesses, for people personally, and how to, arts organizations to spread this word. And, and develop sort of a new cultural norm for, for our time. But we'd love to talk to you about it more and, and see how your office might like to get involved or not, or whatnot.
I'd love that.
Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, thanks, Peter.
Yeah, that's great. You're absolutely right, we need new social mores, new social norms.
Yeah, yeah, because even with a, you know, with a vaccine, we're still, you know, it's going to be a long time before we're, you know, fully vaccinated. And it could be many years, and we'll be dealing with this like, you know, like polio for many, many years to come, so we'll have to adjust a bit in, in everything we do already. Well, thanks, thanks so much for your answer so far, I think we've been having a pretty good, pretty good dialogue. Something, when it comes to the upcoming budget cycle, obviously, there's, you know, there are going to be some difficult decisions that have to be made, right? And you've already mentioned some of your priorities already, could you maybe get into an area? Do you think there's an area where you think there could be use for more outside-the-box thinking? Perhaps with either, you know, an organization like ourselves, or just people, people from the creative community collaborating on ideas for how to approach. A certain policy or a budget area differently?
Sorry, ask, actually, before you re, I would love if you'd re-ask it, just to make sure I understand the question. I also just wanted to, I, I saw Ron's comment, and I really appreciate.
Oh, nice, thank you.
Yori's comment as well, and I, I just, yeah, I would love, for anyone who wants to work on ensuring that the kind of small business, arts and cultural scene. We find strategies for reopening and make that a priority with the county, I'm, I'm game to try to help. So just wanted to make myself available to anyone who wants to follow up on that front. But Peter, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure I understood your question.
Yeah, no, I'm actually, that's, that's actually a really great point that I, I did want to make, was that any. Would you be open to on, you know, as task forces are developed, right, and reopening plans are being formed, or can you commit to, or at least, you know, say, say if you'd be interested in having. You know, creative community or artist, artistic community input in that.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. And in fact, I have had, there have been small businesses in various sectors. Where folks have reached out to me and others asking for an advocate. So a, a dance studio in Los Gatos, for just to give a random example, I don't even live in Los Gatos, but I think the owner may live in, in my district. And other, sorry for the screaming children in the background, I have a three-year-old and a one-year-old, so that's the, the ambiance. But, you know, and so, you know, I, not about me, but, but various elected officials have been able to. Push forward that certain industries are being overlooked and need more guidance from the public health office. And I think that, and maybe, Peter, this starts to get at, at your earlier question. I think a strategy is to form a task force, lay out some use cases, lay out some suggestions. And make sure that a champion helps get it to the right people, because I know the, the hard-working public servants at the county are inundated. You know, every, every business, every industry is clamoring for more support and better guidance. But yeah, I think you all represent a critical part of our life, and so I think it's, I think it's important that your voices are.
Nice, thank you. Yeah, I was kind of round, roundabout way with the last question of, of getting at, building off that. Is there a particular budget area that you think could benefit from more outside-the-box thinking?
Well, gosh.
Or more, or multiple areas?
Yeah, I mean, there, there are many, and you mentioned I'm a former public school teacher, so I have a lot of thoughts on education, but, but that's not really. Yeah, I mean, there, there are many, and you mentioned I'm a former public school teacher. I have a lot of thoughts on education, but, but that's not really under the purview of the city, uh, so much. So I'll, I'll leave that aside for now. Um, I mean, one, one thing I, I'd like us to try to figure out is, is how to, um, move away from this, this feeling that I often get that, um, people think that development in the city is somehow zero sum with other goals. And so I, I try to see, look at things in a very integrated way and look at, for the interconnections. And a, a point I often make, because I'm, consider myself an environmentalist and I'm worried about our climate crisis and think that we need to do more faster. And I love open space and try to get out hiking every opportunity I get. Is that every time that we make it difficult to build, um, housing in our urban core, let's say, for example, what that effectively often translates into is just another acre in the Central Valley gets paved over effectively. Because human beings need to live somewhere, they need shelter. And, um, so I just, I would hope that we can find ways. And, and you know, I think the reason I bring up that example, it's just one example, is that I think often the development community and the environmental community have often felt like they're, um, in, in an oppositional, you know, relationship. Um, and sometimes that's true. And, and often there are tough trade-offs to make. So I, you know, but, but I think to the extent that we can say streamline, green light, create incentives for more infill. And maybe, you know, maybe to bring it back to the topic at hand, maybe a developer who opts into uh, setting aside some funding for arts and culture, um, or some other, maybe an environmentally friendly goal, also gets a lower regulatory burden and some streamlining. Maybe there's a, a race to the top model here where we can actually think about how we design incentives in the city to try to achieve outcomes in a way that harness that kind of natural energy that's out there anyway. Because the harder we make it within the city, the more that, that all that energy and investment goes somewhere else. And I think there are ways to have more of our goals in an integrated way, if we're all willing to give a little bit. And, 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 you know, have a little bit more trust. And not everything's going to be perfect, but I just worry that we often take everything in a silo and then try to create a set of rules for that silo, and then they don't work together as a whole. And so that's kind of my philosophy. I, I'm speaking in abstract terms here, but, um, that was the first thing that popped into my head.
I can certainly appreciate that. Um, and I, I think we would agree, it's really important to think of these things in an integrated way. Building off of that, uh, and you, you actually kind of referenced it a little bit. There is a, uh, we shared with you some information before this, but, um, uh, there's a, a policy on the, the council priority setting agenda. Ostensibly called public or private percent for art, which is, which would be a policy that would, um, require uh, private developers to contribute either, you know, some sort of nominal, uh, fee to a, a fund for public art. Or to install public art or public art or public art space or cultural space in their, uh, in their development. It's in, it's the, the council has asked staff to work on a proposal and come back at some point. We're not entirely sure when that's going to be. Um, but do you have any thoughts on that? And how, do you think that, um, something like you were just speaking to, you know, in terms of incentivizing it would, would be more of a, uh, an approach we could take, um, as opposed to just strictly, you know, implementing a fee or assessing a fee?
Yeah, I appreciate you, uh, bringing it to my attention. I appreciate all the background materials, um, you shared earlier, because I, um, it wasn't totally on my radar, but I'm glad that it is. And I think it's a really interesting, um, you know, policy. And I think, you know, it's sort of akin, at least I think to, um, something that I lived in San Francisco for quite a few years. And I found it kind of amazing that, um, large developments had to create some public space. So a parklet or an atrium that was publicly accessible or a rooftop. And over time, that just became an incredible public amenity. I mean, there's so many buildings, um, downtown that have these incredible parklets or gardens or whatever they are. Um, so I, so I like that concept and I've seen firsthand how something like that can really enhance quality of life and, and create a city for everyone, which is ultimately kind of my goal is, you know, San Jose ought to be a, a great city for everyone and, and from every walk of life and every stage of life. From, you know, young people to retirees and everybody in between, like my wife and I raising little kids who drive us crazy every day. Um, so, I, so I like the concept. The, the only concern I would have back to that idea of thinking in silos and then just layering things is that I'm also a proponent of, um, the concept of a universal fee for development. Where we don't just keep taking the latest priority that we think is important and tacking on a new fee. And then maybe shooting ourselves in the foot in the long run and building less housing than we want, or building or at bringing fewer jobs than we want. And I think that the better way to approach it is to have a universal fee and maybe it, you know, presumably that the amount of the fee is going to scale up with the value of the project. And then having the discussion about our priorities. And how much of that, of, of that fee that's being paid for with new economic growth, new economic development is going to parks, roads, libraries, arts. And, and thinking about it from a holistic perspective, to me feels like better policy. And I'd also say, you know, is, is a benefit to having a universal fee and not setting it too high. Every time we add some housing or we add a new, we add more jobs, that becomes a permanent ongoing part of our revenue base as a city. So while people often have a reflexive, not in my backyard view on development, every time we add some jobs downtown, we now have more ongoing tax revenue that we can use for whatever priorities we have. And I think then the conversation becomes, well, what are our priorities? So I'm, I'm interested to see what staff brings back. I think it's a really interesting idea. The example of the public space in San Francisco is something that I always thought was really fascinating and added a lot of value. So I think it's, it's, um, it's a really interesting concept and I, I want to learn more about it.
Good. I think the good news is that in San Jose especially, we already have, uh, some developers who have embraced this, you know, the concept already and even have been proactive. I, I can think of a few developers at the, one of the peers when they worked with the, uh, the voxel cloud on top of it, where they've proactively stepped up and, and worked with the city to, to get either public art installed in their property or, or in their, in their, uh, their project, or, you know, um, uh, other amenities like you're talking about. So I, I think there is a lot of room, um, to develop a, we think there's a lot of room to develop a really cool policy that could work for everyone. So we're looking forward to that coming back. Um,
Yeah.
We, I just want to call out a few folks in the, in the chat. Um, real quickly, Dave Pichelle, it's a great Almeden and, and South, South San Jose resident. And, and advocate, um, just wanted, he shared a link earlier with a blog, uh, on the Martin Fontana Park that you mentioned earlier in the, the, the association, uh, the neighborhood is, they came together around that. So if you want to learn more about the artwork that's painted on the utility boxes there, um, please check out that link that Dave posted in the chat. And then, um, uh, Roma Dawson from our, uh, our Arts Commission, uh, wanted you to, um, wanted everyone to know that the chair, current chair of the Public Art Committee is actually a D-10 resident, Lynn Brown, who you might be familiar with.
Oh, yeah. I know Lynn. I, yep.
So, um, she's the current, she's the current chair of the Public Art Committee of, of the San Jose Arts Commission. And for everyone, just so you know, that's the commission that advises the city council on arts and culture in San Jose. So, uh, in terms of that, actually, what kind of, um, do you envision, um, you know, you're not the liaison to the Arts Commission, but, uh, how would you envision your office, um, interacting with the commissioner? Do you, or following, you know, the, the activities of the commission? Would you have a, a staffer who would be obviously not assigned to just the arts, but would you have a staffer who would have that under their?
Yeah, I, I think that would absolutely fall into someone's, um, you know, policy portfolio, if you will. And they'd be responsible for keeping tabs on the work of the commission and making sure that I'm, you know, aware of, of the latest and greatest thinking and, um, you know, the private percent concept, for example, being something that I'll obviously follow closely when staff issues a recommendation. But yeah, it'll, it'll definitely be within the, the policy portfolio.
And are you putting, are, are you at this point, you know, you've had a little time to work on it? Are you putting together a staff now? Are you still hiring folks? Are you still sort of interviewing? Or, and what do you, what do you envision your staff looking like in terms of size and roles and things like that? Then, then the nuts and bolts, or are you not really?
Yeah.
Are you there yet?
Yeah, we're, we're getting there. I'd say we're kind of midstream. So, um, uh, Matthew Cuvado, who ran my campaign is a, a great, lifelong San Josean is, uh, going to come in as chief of staff. And, um, we've, uh, I think identified a couple of other folks and then we have a few open roles. So, um, and if it's at all relevant, I'm, Peter, I can send you the links and you can share them with the group. But, uh, we have, I think, three openings now that have been posted on the city website. So we're going through the process. And typically for those who, you know, may not have the context, um, the council office is usually five or six people who staff the council member and have, um, a policy, you know, set of policy areas that they look at as well as responsibilities around community engagement, constituent services, understanding what the community's needs are, communicating information back out, those, those sorts of things. So we're just kind of putting that team together now.
Well, we've got a very creative network out there and some of the, a lot of them are in need of, uh, of good, you know, good paying, uh, jobs right now. So. I think we'd be happy to post, um, post links to the opportunities and I think our network expands beyond that too. So yeah, we'd be happy to help you find some good people.
Awesome.
A couple of other, uh, notes from the chat. Um, maybe you could speak to, Roma also mentioned the, the Google, uh, project in downtown west. And they've recently, you know, released their proposal. They're going through environmental review. The environmental report is up for comment right now. Can you speak to, um, your, just your thoughts on that is, uh, without getting too deep into it, maybe your thoughts on how, how it's progressed so far? Where you think the, um, especially the, the community amenity aspect of it, right? And the housing aspects of it are, and not just the, the commercial and jobs aspect. And, uh, you know, just general thoughts on, on that process and how it's going and how we can best engage with this, with the city as an arts community on, uh, where it goes from here?
Yeah, we'll keep, you know, keep, I think what you're doing is, is important, you know, keep, keep organizing and bringing people together and articulating a vision and, and principles and then advocating. I think that's super important. I, for those of you who don't know, between being a public school teacher, oh, Peter mentioned it, I guess in my bio. Um, and then running for office, I spent a bunch of time building tools for civic engagement. So I'm a, I'm a big believer in community groups, getting organized, advocating, um, and, and driving an agenda. Obviously it's then responsibility of elected officials to then figure out how to bring those together and balance them and, and make the necessary trade-offs. But I, I think what you're doing is, is really important. You know, when it comes to Google, uh, you, you mentioned that some developers are, uh, particularly forward-looking. And, um, really kind of bringing a new spirit to economic development in San Jose. And, and I put Google in that category. I've, I've been very impressed with what they've, what they've done. I think certainly, um, they have the means to do this, but relative to most developers, they, they're really going above and beyond. And, um, unlike the old walled garden campuses that our tech, our local tech giants have typically built that are, you know, some central buildings surrounded by an ocean of a parking lot, um, you can only drive to. I, I think, you know, Google's desire to be next to a transit station, to open up onto the river, to make investments in public space. Really important. I think it's important that all of us and, and particularly you all as advocates are continuing to say how important it is that the space, that there'd be great public space, great public art, that it be accessible, that those kinds of, you know, aesthetically pleasing, et cetera. But, um, yeah, I think Google is kind of setting a new bar, which is exciting. I have spoken with some other, uh, developers who own a bit of land in downtown, including Urban Community and Urban Catalyst, who I think also have that kind of forward-looking vision. Which is really, I'd call it what Tocqueville called self-interest well-understood. If, if you think long, if you're invested for the long term, I think you, which, which I think all of these folks are, Google's talking about bringing 20,000 employees for, you know, what could be a century or more. So, you know, how it goes, but, um, you know, urban, urban community, urban catalyst, these, these guys are thinking about the long-term investment. They're not just trying to flip a, a parcel and make a quick buck. They understand that if it's beautiful and environmentally sustainable and includes public space and unique retail, and it, it has a sense of place, that it'll ultimately work better. It'll be more valuable, um, from an economic standpoint. And so I'm, I'm excited about that. I think that's the future of development and we're lucky to have some real champions who, who believe in San Jose and think that way. I also caution, being in the role that I'm now entering into, I also say, keep in mind that if you push too hard on every type of developer and every development, we will only have the really big ones with really deep pockets. And I think we need to think about scaling up our expectations and our demands based on the size of the development and, and, you know, I just, I, I think we also want to leave room for smaller, uh, smaller developers, smaller businesses. So it's complicated. We want to have an ecosystem, which means diversity, which means we can't have one-size-fits-all expectations. But I've been really happy with, with what Google's doing.
Into sort of building off of that, what are your thoughts on what the city can do around, um, preventing displacement? Not just of residents, but of small businesses and, um, you know, particularly obviously arts businesses. But, but small businesses in, in, in general in San Jose, because I know that the primarily it's because of property, you know, as property values rise, it's just, it becomes, uh, less and less tenable for some of them to, to pay the rent and, and you might see, you know, some property owners selling. So, um, and, and the property is turning over. So any, any thoughts on what this, I know the city's doing a lot and they're exploring ways to, to do this. But any thoughts that you have on strategy?
Yeah, I, I have a few. I mean, I think through one lens and, yeah, I don't want to be overly reductionist about this. To some extent, the, the housing crisis in San Jose, and it's really regional and, and statewide and in our coastal areas. And the challenges of retail, particularly in an area like downtown are actually two sides of the same coin, which is that we don't have enough residential density. So to some extent, I would argue that if we build more housing, and I would say all of the above, yes, affordable with public subsidies to the extent possible, to the extent that the public is willing to tax itself to make those investments. But also market, market rate, people coming in and investing because it makes sense. Um, and, and I'll give a quick plug for including that market rate, even though sometimes, uh, people look down upon it. Ultimately, we got to match up the number of people, the number of units. And when my wife and I were living in San Francisco, we ended up in a rent-controlled apartment because it was the only unit available to us. And the whole time I felt guilty that we were in an apartment that was rent-controlled when we could have afforded something more. And so part of, and I'm going to get around to the retail piece, but part of solving our housing crisis is just about having units be in better balance with our population and our job growth. And so as we build those units, even market rate, that means one less person working in a tech company who's going into the rental market at the, at the kind of lower cost end of that market out competing somebody else who doesn't make as much. It's one less unit that is being grabbed by that tech worker. And they all, you know, everybody needs a place to live. So my, my view is, and I don't think that one district should bear all of the housing production, but for downtown in particular, um, and I think this is true in a lot of areas where we have commercial zones. If we built more housing around that urban village model, not just necessarily upzoning the whole city in one fell swoop in a uniform way, but we concentrate and build up in near transit and in commercial zones, you could create more housing for everyone and lessen that, uh, that, that pressure on the housing side. But you would also start to have a walkable city where ground floor retail would start to really work. And I think the fact that so many of us in San Jose live out in our suburban neighborhoods and get in our car actually makes that, um, that more unique, local, kind of bespoke retail experience that you find in San Francisco and New York and, it's just, it's harder in a more suburban, car-centric city. And so I kind of think that, and I don't think this will solve everything. I mean, the truth is, the more you, the more development there is, you're always going to have gentrification pressures. And I think you have to figure out, if you're going to allow more building, how to also compensate people who suffer as a result. So I, I don't pretend that these are simple problems, but when I look at a place like downtown that relative to other vibrant downtown urban areas in the country, really just lacks residents, just doesn't have a lot of housing stock. You could put a big dent in our local housing crisis and cost of living crisis and support retail by just building a lot more housing of all, for all income levels. So I, yeah, I don't, I, I think these things can, again, we can take an integrated approach to solving some of these problems.
Yeah. And so a lot of it has been, is a chicken and the egg scenario, right? Where you, um, you know, the retail thrives because there's people there to use it, right? And to walk around and take, and to, to, to take advantage of it. So, um, we need to, we need to be thinking both ways. That's why I think the city is pursuing, you know, a lot of mixed-use, um, development, integrated developments like the Google campus hopefully. So, uh, thank you for, for referencing that and for having that perspective. Um, so a question from, um, Ron, one of our fabulous, um, uh, arts commissioners, soon to be former arts commissioner, but, um, one of our core team members, um, who's also, uh, just a fantastic advocate, um, at the state, uh, in local and just regional level. And a great accordion player, by the way. Notes that there's an increasingly popular model, um, that cities and counties are looking at to place artists in residence in government agencies. This is sort of to our conversation earlier about, you know, creative, uh, uh, problem solving. Because artists can provide a new perspective on solving complex problems or issues that governments face. What are your sentiments on potentially placing an artist in residence in a specific city department in San Jose? And was, is there any department? And was, is there any department you think it would be particularly beneficial?
It's a really interesting concept. I, I will say that in the two tech companies that I ran, I spent about a decade in tech. The, the people who I love talking to were the creatives in the company, the designers and, and the folks who were, who were truly creatives, artists, who thought about things, who thought about a different possible, a different world essentially. And I, I often came from more of the partnerships and, and the business side of things and just general management. And I loved, I loved hanging out with our kind of generative, creative types in the company because they give you that sense of possibility and inspiration. And so I do, I do see the value in that. In fact, there were, you know, times in the company where we would go, you know, spend an afternoon at IDEO or go hang out with, with folks who really specialize in that kind of creative design thinking approach. So I can see the value, how we get the city. I'll tell you, I was, I was just posting one of my job openings and I, I was thinking, trying to think a little more creatively about the communications role to be more like content creation, like actually doing graph, a lot of graphic design and, and helping to explain to the public what the city's doing in a more visual and, and using audio and video, but just like a much more sensory accessible way. And there's just, there's no job, there's literally no job description that I'm allowed to hire for that fits that. Like that we have, I mean, there are existing templates that we, you know, basically have to use. So, so I tried to kind of shoehorn my ideas into an existing template. So I, I guess I just say that, that government is slow and, and can be a little bureaucratic. So it's going to take some work, but there are people inside City Hall who are pushing for more design thinking, more creativity, more open ended, creative problem solving, starting with, you know, thinking about the better future and then figuring out how to get there. So I'm going to be a champion for that in City Hall. And this idea of a, an artist in residence is, is a really interesting one. I'll have to think more about which department. I mean, it's, it's a good idea, but I don't want to just say, well, yeah, go, go put it, you know, in the police department or something. I think we gotta figure out, and maybe it would be great in the police department, I don't know. But that's a good one. I'd love to follow up on people's thoughts on that.
Sure, yeah. And, and Yori also notes that Dana and him, and he had been working on a, an arts ambassador model for city government too. So, and I know that, you know, and I should give a shout out, Dana is an arts laureate this year as well with S, with S V Creates. So she's, she, part of that role is to spread the, the word and to build a public vote for, for arts out there. So certainly something we're interested in talking with you about. So thanks, thanks for that. It's getting up to, getting close to 6:30. We ought to, I wanted to get to a couple other questions. But if anyone else has any other thoughts or comments from Matt, please feel free to drop them in the chat. And if we can't get to them today or we can't get them in the context of this forum, I'm sure Matt wouldn't mind, you know, following up and giving us some answers we can get out to you later. And this won't be the last, this, this is your, your incoming now. So we got you for the next at least four years. So we, we will be talking. And speaking to that, there's something I did want to bring up with you because it's been on the minds of a lot of folks in San Jose lately around the elections. But like a lot of cities all around the country right now, we're experiencing in San Jose a lot of social tension. And especially in 2020, we've seen quite a bit of it in a lot of different ways. Some ways, I think, or it seems that we're more civically engaged. In other ways, it feels as if we're talking or we're in some cases yelling past each other. I want to, and this is from Brendan Rossin, who's on our core team. Harvard sociologist and public policy professor, Robert Putnam, described the arts as a, as unique from other forums for building civic life, such as community meetings and school board politics. And his quote was this, "The arts represent perhaps the most significant underutilized forum for rebuilding community in America." And I'd love to hear your thoughts. I'm sure we'd all love to hear your thoughts, given the recent context around, you know, negative campaigning and some of the, the, the tropes that we've seen used by some of our independent expenditure committees out there. And then of course, recently with the SBO committee, getting itself into some serious hot water. I would love to hear your thoughts on how we can build a more robust and healthy civic life here in San Jose, especially given your background in civic engagement online and then ways that are, the arts can play a role in that.
Yeah, it's a great question and good one to close on. Although we can try to get to any in the chat, obviously, if we have time. I smiled earlier because I actually took a class taught, co-taught by Robert Putnam when I was in college. And I'm a, I'm a big fan of Bowling Alone and, and his other work. And I, I agree with him. You know, when it comes to the independent expenditures, first of all, I think what the SVO put out was reprehensible. And I was one of the first people to publicly comment on that. And I, I think they're facing a reckoning now for good reason. And obviously there had been a, more than one isolated instant, which I think is part of why the reckoning has been so swift and severe. And, and it's, it's important. I think to the more positive side of your, so I guess the, to finish the thought on the IEs, you know, unfortunately, the, the candidates often get kind of knocked around by these much bigger outside entities. And, and a lot of voters don't realize that the candidates have often, you know, no interaction or interactually legally limited from communicating with those outside groups. In fact, those groups, per Supreme Court decisions and interpretations of the First Amendment, are allowed to raise as much money as they want and say whatever they want effectively, almost. And the candidates are not allowed to quote unquote coordinate with or, or communicate with them about the campaign. So what often happens is you'll have outside groups and, you know, business groups, labor groups, those tend to be the two big categories. That's not to say that there aren't other outside groups, but usually, you know, you have your Chamber of Commerce and you'll have, you know, a umbrella labor group. We certainly have that in San Jose, most cities do, and other entities that will spend money. And I remember in my campaign, a luckily, we didn't have a lot of negative advertising in our race, which was really fortunate. But I remember an IE sending a piece out on my behalf and it was just not my message. And it was very frustrating because my face was on it. But you're literally not allowed. So, so that's a real challenge. I would say the best antidote is, is education and organization. And to the extent that, you know, we through grassroots groups can get people to come together to learn about issues and get beyond the talking points. The reason I tried to, I know at times in our conversation I got a little abstract because I really think these issues are nuanced and complicated and we need a holistic approach. And that's not simple. I think it takes conversation like the one we're having to think more deeply about the issues and get really informed so that we can get beyond the idea that developers are just greedy or labor unions are just rent seeking or whatever, whatever the critiques are. I don't, I don't know, but whatever, whatever the negative view is, we got to quit talking past each other. Because what I've found is generally speaking, almost everybody wants the same things. We just disagree about how to get there. And so that's really, that's why I believe in dialogue and civic engagement. Because if we can just have better conversations, I think we may move faster toward our goals. So, yeah, I know, I know there's, again, there's no silver bullet, but I think what we're doing tonight is important and we need to get more people in the conversation.
Well, thank you. I think that's a really good note to, for us to wrap up on for tonight. And again, Matt, I really appreciate you taking the time to be here with us and to, to, to meet with the creative community. We would love to continue this conversation and we're looking forward to, to working with you as you progress on the city council. So congratulations on your, your victory in March. And, and again, thank you for being here tonight. Any, any thoughts you want to leave us with beyond that?
Well, it was my, it was my pleasure. I really appreciate the invitation. I'd love to stay in touch. We need to draw on all of our creative energy to get through this crisis and to build the kind of city that we, that we all want to live in. So please, please be in touch. Would it be, Peter, can I send you my contact info and for you to share with the group? Would that work?
Absolutely. And if you want, you could even type it into the chat right now and we could, if you, if you feel comfortable and we can.
Sure, yeah, yeah, well, I'll at least.
And while, while you're doing that, I'll just let you know that, so Matt Cuvado is getting plenty of love in the chat from multiple locations. So you've, you've obviously chosen a good chief of staff.
Well deserved.
So we'll, we'll look forward to working with, with him. We definitely know him.
That's my personal email and I am a little inundated without any staff right now. So I might be a little bit slow, but please feel free to reach out.
Awesome.
And then I'm going to go ahead and put my personal cell phone in there. It's still, it's my eight three one area code, but.
Keeping it real in Watsonville, I like that.
Right, yeah, still, I'll have that number. You can also find me on Facebook, LinkedIn, Twitter, I'm, I'm pretty active.
Actually, yeah, we'll get, we'll get that information out there for sure. So folks can get, get in touch with you. And again, thank you so much for, for the time. I know you got a busy night going on, so I will let you get back to it. And, and, and once again, we're looking forward to working with you.
Thanks so much, really appreciate everybody's time. Have a great evening.
Thanks, everyone, for being here. And this video will be posted on our Facebook and our website as soon as we get it processed.
Awesome.
Talk to you soon.
Good night, everyone. Thanks, Peter.
No problem. Thanks, Matt.